Looks like pretty much everybody is in now. It is 7:01. Good evening, everybody. This is the September 8th, 2022. The only Board of Appeals meeting for the town of Concord. Welcome. I would appreciate it if everybody's muted and has their cameras off during the meeting and then wants the item that you're interested in or that you want to comment on or have questions about. If you can then just raise your hand and then we'll call upon you during the public comments section. I'll start off with with a roll call about on everybody on the board members. So that everybody's here. Mr. Faiya.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Swain.
Here.
And I'm Theo Kinnaman, chairing tonight's meeting, and I'm here as well. For people that are waiting, just a note that we had, we had a very long agenda tonight and we had quite a few requests for continuation. So just to name them all. 21 Cambridge Turnpike is continued. 48 Y Pittsburgh Turnpike will be continued. All of these will be continued to our October 13th meeting. Then 309 Garfield Road is continued. The Concord Academy, Academy meeting that was scheduled for 7:30 will be continued as well as the 7:35 meeting for the Concord Public Schools in regards to the Sandbourne Middle School. That will be continued as well to October 13. And that said, our 7 o'clock meeting for 28 Cambridge Turnpike is continued. So to, I would assume 7 o'clock on the October 13th.
Yep, 7 o'clock.
And I guess we need a motion.
Good ad effect. Sure, I'll jump in. I'd move that the application of Lynn Wilson for special permit under sections 5, 3, 4, and 11, 6 of the zoning bylaws for stabling and boarding of horses in a residential district at 28 Cambridge Turnpike be continued without discussion to our zoning meeting of October 13th at 7 o'clock.
Mrs. Smith.
Hi.
Ms. Faiya.
Hi.
And Chair Vote Aye as well. We have one more minute to be before we can start a 7:05 meeting. So let's wait on that. Just checking.
There it is.
There we are, 7:05, on the dot. So opening back up the meeting, 45 Coburn Hill Road LLC for special permit under section 713, 715, and 11, 6 of the zoning bylaw to demolish the existing 1804 square foot dwelling and construct a 5,296 square foot dwelling that I think by now has been reduced a little bit. That's over 50% larger than the existing gross floor area on a non-conforming lot at 45 Coburn Hill Road. Just for the record, I did not attend the last meeting where this item was discussed. I did however reviewed the recordings and I did go do the site visit as well and I did, did file the appropriate paperwork on everybody that I did review the recording. I would assume that the board member also went to the, did their site visits at their own leisure. That's appreciated. And is there anybody here from the applicant who wants to speak?
Good evening. My name's Ben Finnegan. Managing member of 45 Coburn Hill LLC, owner and builder. Thank you for your time. Since last meeting, we made a number of fairly significant changes from the plan based upon neighborhood input. Notably, reduce gross floor area from 5296 to 5140. Eliminated the third floor livable area, reducing height by three and a half feet. Reducing the width of the structure from 77 feet to 61. And one of the comments was on the continuous roof line. So the roof line, we, we made a front-facing table to break up the front roof line. Those are the major changes since, since last meeting. If you happen to answer any questions. I did review these changes with, with the neighbors and received fairly positive feedback from those that I, I talked with. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I noticed, I noticed indeed the, the revised elevations and indeed we got a letter from three of us endorsing, endorsing the plan. Any of the board members have any comments? None? Yeah, I must, I must say that the need, I did the original spinoff was quite imposing and I think this is, this the new revised elevation indeed make make the building a lot more appropriate for, for the street. And I would have had problems with it, with the original elevation as it was very imposing with a very dominant roof facing, facing this street. So that's, no comments from, comments from the board. Let's open it up for public comment. Anybody here in the public want to speak on this? Anybody? Not seeing anybody. I do want to, indeed, as I just noted, there was a letter that came in yesterday from Susan Miller, Carol Neville, and Jane Torpey. 56, 46, and 55 Coburn Hill Road endorsing, endorsing the plan. So that, that's, that was, that was good. And if there's no public comment, I'll close that portion of the, of the meeting. Any discussion? The members.
Yeah, I guess I, I, I do appreciate that the applicant has reached out to the neighbor, has been responsive to their concerns. I think we've seen that the neighbors by that letter do, do feel that their concerns have been addressed. You know, I think my concerns about some of the massing are addressed by the the revised elevations as well. And you know, based on the site visit, seeing the house across the street, seeing the one a few doors down that the board had previously approved with a similar gross floor area. I don't think we have exact numbers, but I think it's close enough that this is, this is consistent with what's been previously proved for the street. You know, I think even though there are a lot of non-conforming lots, I think it's five feet of frontage that create the non-conformity all along the street. And you know, I think the house across the street, the one a few doors down, and this, now this house are probably indicative of the direction the neighborhood is going. And it seems like the neighbors are okay with it. So you know, again, I appreciate the, the changes to bring down the height and move some of the massing to the back, reduce the square footage that the applicant has made and, and improve the aspect on the street. So I think I've been one over here.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I think that this is a, you know, every once in a while, we see a situation where the process works exactly like it's intended to work. And I think this is probably one of those. You know, there was a proposal, there was reaction to it. We had a developer builder here who was very conscious of the neighborhood and very interested in in creating a, a house that would, you know, fit into the neighborhood, would be acceptable to the neighbors and still meet the needs of the builders' needs for size, et cetera. And I think that it's, you know, very, very good project. So I certainly support it. And I think I think it's a great outcome.
But yeah, I, I agree with that, Jim, wholeheartedly. For me, it wasn't necessarily, necessarily an issue about numbers, whether it's 5100 square foot or 5200 square foot. But it doesn't, didn't matter that much to me, but it was about bulk massing and architectural detailing. And I, I think this this revised plan addressed my concerns in that, in that regards. And it definitely scaled down the building. So and I, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the application of 45 Coburn Hill Road LLC for a special permit under section 713, 715, and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to construct a 5,140 square foot dwelling at 45 Coburn Hill Road, you know, with the required findings under the bylaw and any standard conditions.
Second. All in favor, Ms. Faiya?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Here, oh, yes, as well. So, thank you so much. And yeah, good luck.
Thank you very much.
And so for anybody waiting for 48 Y Pittsburgh Turnpike, that meeting has been, that hearing has been requested to be continued, but we never opened that, that hearing, correct?
Right.
So, so we don't need to vote to move it then.
Yeah, I think we do have to do the motion. Yeah.
Yeah. Then, then there, here's another one. I am going to be recusing myself from this project, from this hearing. So can I, can I continue to, can I, can your vote continue it?
Well, you've got three people, right? Tom can vote. So you're all set. Yeah. So I'd move that we continue the hearing for Corey North Road LLC for special permit under sections 10, 11, 6, 11, 8 of the zoning bylaw for planned residential development for six units at 48 Y Pittsburgh Turnpike until our meeting of October 13th at 7:05.
Second.
Well, all in favor, Ms. Faiya?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Miss, Mr. Swain?
Yes.
And it is 7:15. So we can do the same thing with 309 Garfield Road also being continued through October 13th. That's going to be a long meeting that night. And this is for a special permit constructor, almost 2,590 2,597 square foot garage with second story addition at 309 Garfield Road. Can I have a motion to continue that?
Oh, move.
Yep, so moved. It's 7:0710, right? On the 13th.
Yeah, that's 7:10. And Ms. Fia?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And I say yes as well. So continued. So 7:20 is then our next meeting that is New Life Community Church. So we're a little bit early on that one. So we will be waiting for that. In the meantime, I have a, somebody with a hand up, Mr. Meister.
Yes, I'm from New Life Committee Church. I didn't know if I was supposed to raise my hand because I was on the agenda.
Not, not just yet. We, we will open up in three minutes. We will open up the hearing and then we will let you speak. So thank you though for being on the ball here.
Do you want to do the minutes in the meantime, Theo?
I'm fine doing the minutes in the meantime.
I'd move approval for the minutes of August 11th.
My second.
Ms. Fia?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. CFO time. So meetings, meeting minutes, the last meeting has been approved. I think for all the administrative business we have.
Right. Theo, if I can just use the last minute we have, just a note to Haley or others. I am out of town and out of state from early Wednesday morning, the 14th until end of the day on the 28th of September. So if there are things that have to be signed by this, by a member of the board secretary, we're going to have to ask one of the other members to sign them just as a heads up.
Yeah, that's okay. Just in FYI, we don't require signatures on minutes anymore. So those get.
I know that, but I know that, but I think I've signed some social permits and other things since I've been.
Right. Okay. Understood.
But you're not skipping out on the October 13th meeting, right?
No, I, I will be back, although I head out the next day for another trip. So it's kind of wild, but so we better. It's an early morning on the, on the October 14th. So we better get it rolling. All right. Did we make it to the 15th with all that chatter to the 7:15?
No, it was still at 7:19. We have a minute to go. But.
In the meantime, let me just ask Steven. I'll, I'll kill, I'll kill that minute. Steven, will you be sharing your screen or would you like me to share the materials?
I'd like you to share the material if you could.
No problem.
I tried to keep it short.
Yep, I've got the, the presentation ready to go. So there we are.
Yeah, yep, yep. There we are. It's just, I think, difficult stuff, right? We're just exactly on the dot. So it being 7:20. We're opening up the hearing for New Life Community Church for sign variance on the section 8B3 of the sign bylaw, an additional freestanding sign that exceeds the 25 square foot limit at 221 Baker Avenue. Mr. Meister, you're here to speak on behalf of the application and the applicant, right?
Yes, I am. Essentially, the main point is we're on a dead end street and we can't put our sign like most people do directly in front of their property for it to be seen. So our, our request is that we're allowed that additional about 10 and a half square feet over the 25 square foot. So our building could be seen right at that intersection of 221 Baker and Baker Extension. I, I don't think that plot plan really shows where the extension is. The Animal Hospital is our neighbor on this plan to our left and directly across Baker Avenue is an office building. So those are basically our, would be our two abutters. I don't think they had any objection. And you can see where the dead end street is there. Baker Avenue no longer crosses Route 2. So there's no access to our property from Route 2, only from Baker Avenue on this dead end street. So I want, we were hoping to put the sign on that little island right there. So as people drive up toward on Baker Avenue, they would see the sign and recognize that even though we're on a street that says not a through street, they would continue to, to the church. So this helps visitors and, and when I say visitors, it's people in Concord who come to some of our outreach events like the, we call it our, our, our Harvest Festival. We're going to have October 8th. And we had one last year. So having the sign, I tried to put it there to give you an idea what it would look like. It would give some indication that there's a building they need to continue driving to.
So, sir, I just wanted to back, can you back up one second, Haley? Thanks. Can you, just a quick question. So I think I have this right. So where you've taken this picture is you're standing right where that left turn, you know, where the left turn is.
Yeah, that's from Google map.
Right. And then the sign that you've superimposed here, which is the sign you're proposing, is on church property in, in front of, I mean, I know the church is to the right there, but it's, it's basically on, that's on church property there?
Um, you know, I would have to say I believe it is, but if you look at the plot plan, it might be it's, it, it's not the buildings, the other, other owners' building, but that island has been there when we bought it from the Elts Club. So we've always had access to it. I, I think it is, but if you look at where road boundaries are technically, you might say that it needs to be moved a little bit to the right. I mean, I'm not, like I say, too concerned. I wasn't too concerned about the boundaries per se. And the other interesting aspect is there's a lot of vehicles that actually don't make that left-hand turn and they're continuously driving up to our driveway and, and driving around that circle. So we get as many people, we get more people than we want. And sometimes the people that are looking for us turn left and get lost. So it's kind of a mixed bag.
Yeah, I think my, my point of the question though was is in order for the sign to, to do, in order for the sign to do its job effectively, what you're saying is, is that it needs to be down the road. So people could see that going down the road is the right thing to do.
Yes.
And then it's in front of, it basically in front of your church. And so that goes to the issue of, I assume that goes to the issue of the size of the sign. I mean, it just, it's sort of, it's got to be, it's got to be to a certain size. Otherwise, you wouldn't have that ability to see it from this intersection.
That's, that's the crux of the matter. Just to make it large enough and attractive so that people will see it when they drive up to that intersection. The note, to know to keep driving.
Thank you.
And again, the only direct neighbor, well, the only two abutters are the Animal Hospital, which we have a great relationship. Sometimes they park in our parking lot when they have issues. And so again, I don't think they would mind. We have a good relationship with them and the people that work in the office building next door. They often come over and walk on our property on the lunchtime, which we allow. So I think we have a good relationship with both the neighbors that are close to our property.
So I'm, I'm, I'm looking, looking here at, at a couple of, of items. And I think you, you picked up on, you're spot on that, that island that is where the sign is shown in is, is public right of way. So it's, it's not owned by by the church. So I think that's, that's something that, that we need, need to deal with. I'm not sure we can approve a sign that's, that's on somebody else's property. And that will be one. And also technically, aren't we talking about two variances here? One for an additional sign, because there's only one freestanding sign allowed. So we're we are being asked to approve a, a second freestanding sign. To give a variance for that. And then the size is over the 25 square foot. So that would be second variance in my, in my book.
I, okay, I was a little confused on that because I thought, because we abutted Route 2, that that sign that we have that can be viewed from Route 2 would not count as a freestanding sign because it was on Route 2 and there's no actual property from that Route 2. You could be wrong, but that was my understanding was that because there was no access to our property from Route 2, that that sign viewed from Route 2 would not count as a, as a freestanding sign. I could be wrong. I mean, that was my interpretation.
The, the way I read it here. Well, a freestanding sign shall not exceed 50 square feet of area when the establishment runs on Route 2. Or more than 25 square feet of area when the establishment runs on a street other than Route 2. No more than one freestanding sign shall be committed on a lot. So and then, and then send a, a freestanding sign shall not extend over a public way. But this one, you know, as you have shown it, is, is in the public way. And I do think that, you know, we have two, two freestanding signs, which would be, would be a variance, but I.
Okay.
Yep. Any, any other comments from the board here? Any, let's, let's open it up for no further comments. Let's open it up for a public comment. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing, seeing no hands up, I will close the, the public comments section. Any, any discussion from the board? I know that, you know, if Elizabeth were here, I think she, she would have very strong feelings here. And I might maybe might not this, I don't think I will disagree with her on, on that in this, in this case. But I'd like to, to hear comments, thoughts from our other members.
Would the town engineering department be able to give us some insight about the location of the sign as it relates to the public way?
They, they could, but one of the plans that the applicant has submitted shows, shows a property line and it shows oh, and it shows a property line on the inside of that, that, that island. And it's, it's, it's clearly shown. There, there it is. There it is. You see the dark continuous line being the property line and, and that the sign clearly outside of the property line.
So. But given that it's a dead end street, it's possible, I don't know this for sure, that the town acting through its Department of Public Works could give a license to put that sign there if it had no objection.
Potentially, potentially, although, although the sign bylaw says relatively clearly, right, that that signs shall not extend over a public way.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, well, I was going to say, I think there's a, I think there, you've identified a couple of issues, Theo. I think, well, I, I was gonna say, I think there's a, I think there, you've identified a couple of issues, Theo, and, and the first. One is whether there's two signs and um, I guess that whether we have to. You know, have a formal application for the two signs or not. I don't, personally, I don't feel too badly about the two signs because I, I happen to think that this particular sign. That is being proposed here is. Um, a bit of a public service um, in the sense that. It does make it clear. Uh, to people who want to go um. To the church that they should go ahead and it makes it clear to people who are, do not want to go to the. You know, don't want to go that way because they want to stay on Baker Avenue that they had to take a left. So I think there's, there's a, a real public benefit and a safety benefit and all that to, to having people. Make the right choice at that intersection. Um, I am concerned about the issue being on the public way and whether. There is a, a way. Um, you know, I don't think that we can solve that one necessarily tonight in the sense that. Um, you know, we have a plan that says it's not, you know. It's gonna be in maybe the public way. And if it's, you know, if we, I don't know if it can be moved or. You know, what can happen, what's possible in terms of either moving it inside the public, inside the property line. Or uh, getting some kind of license arrangement or whatever. Um, with the town. It just, it feels like one of those things where. I would say that. You know, it's, this is a really good idea in my judgment, but I think we just have to make sure it gets executed in a way that we can. All live with and, and, and it's not going to be possible in my mind to have it. You know, to approve something that's on a um, that's not in the property of the. Of the applicant.
Yeah, I'm uh, I'm, I'm looking here at. Some of the locations, but it's going to be given a vegetation. It's, it's going to be hard to find a location on site that is visible, but, but I, I, I agree with you that. And that, you know, we can't approve something on somebody else's property. Um.
I mean, I think that it's, I think that we have, you know, on other boards and committees and even this one, we've had. I've, I've occasionally sort of encouraged the. Town to try to work with the applicant to figure out if there is a solution to this. Um, and I would certainly do so here because I, I do think. That, you know, having. I mean, the only other, the only other solution I suppose would be to have the town itself in the public way, put up a sign that, you know, indicated that the. Church and the other building are this way and, you know, Route Two is that way kind of thing. I mean, there could be a public safety sign, but. But uh, you know, I'm really sympathetic to what. Um, the applicant wants to do here. And I, I love to find a way for him to do it. And I certainly don't have any problem with the two sign approach. It's just a question. I'm getting it someplace that we can. But I, but I don't think the board can, can put a variance to allow a variance to have a sign be put on. Somebody else's property without that, that person, you know, agreeing to it in some way, shape or form through license or otherwise.
So would that person be the town of Concord? Uh, does this?
So.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know. I think so. I don't know though. I mean, that's why I'd say I, I think it would be. Yeah, that's why I'm trying to encourage through this, that I think that, uh, the encourage the. Um, planning department and, and others to try to. Help you solve this problem because I wanna, by indicating that I think that it's a problem that. If we can find a solution for, I think I at least as a member of the board would, would really support. The effort because I, I think it's, I think the cause is appropriate.
I happen to agree with Jim because I go by that site quite often. And I think the sign would really enhance that project and that church. Uh, one area that you might investigate, although my experience with it is, is more of a problem than you could imagine. But if the town were willing to abandon that. End of Baker Avenue. Then the title to that likely would be split down the middle, some of which would go to the church, some of which would probably go to the adjacent neighbor. However, that gets to be fairly complicated and can be quite convoluted. So it may not be practical as a matter. But it's worth raising with the planning staff and/or the engineering staff.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And then um, and then, then you, it's, it's pretty overgrown and I'm actually looking here at a, the different screen. But even, yeah, even if you were to go further down the street, I think there's between the property line and, and, and Baker Ave, there's a substantial setback, even if you were to. Approach a neighbor, um, or maybe doing something jointly. With the new sign with the animal hospital, but they also have a significant. Uh, setback, green setback.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's some beautiful, there's some beautiful trees there too that, there's one tree that's an oak. Or a uh, maple. And it does make some of the viewing difficult. Um, that picture that I. Use from Google Maps is a little bit old and the tree is actually bigger. Um, but, and I just, we don't want to cut down any beautiful trees, put it that way. So.
Yeah, and, and there's also a, a provision in the bylaw that you're not supposed to put signs on, on trees. Just.
And also, it also looks like you're not the only one uh, on Baker Ave who has a sign or wants to sign in uh. In the public right of way. The animal hospital sign might be in the public right of way as well.
Yeah, who knows? So with the applicant's permission, um. I, I think I'd like to try to vote to continue this hearing. In order to allow you to have the opportunity to work with the town staff and see if we can so, overcome some of these problems. I mean. Believe you me, I think I'm hearing that the board. Would be more than happy to grant something to do this. We're just trying to, you know, it's just like. This is, this gets into a property law issue that we just can't get our, we can't get our hands around at this stage.
Understood.
Um, so um, Mr. Meister, we'd like to continue this meeting. Um. To um, or we can continue to uh, the October thirteenth meeting, but. I'm not sure whether you will have, well, we can continue it. And if, if you don't have a resolution by then, you know, we can, we can always continue it, it, it again.
I'd appreciate that.
Okay. And so move, I think we're now up to seven fifteen or thereabouts on October thirteenth.
Yeah.
Seven fifteen, seven twenty, I can't remember.
Yeah. It's seven fifteen. Yeah.
Wait a second.
Uh, Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mrs. Faria.
Hi.
Uh, Chair votes aye as well. Um. Mr. Meister, uh, the luck and we'll see you, uh, we'll see you in a month.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
No problem. Thank you. Um, so then we have seven twenty uh, meeting and I just, a need for all the people that are uh, not. There aren't that many people here, but just, uh, just in case. Uh, the seven thirty uh, scheduled hearing on Concord Academy and the seven thirty five scheduled hearing on uh, for the Concord Public Schools, Sambal Middle School. Have both been continued to, or will be continued to uh, without discussion. To our uh, October thirteenth uh, hearing. Um, so there will be no discussion. So if anybody's on the line here waiting for that. Um, you, if you saw desire, you can then uh, leave the meeting and come back on the uh, next month. Um. So that said, it's way past seven twenty five. Uh, Sarah and Bill Murphy for an amendment to special permit. That we uh, issued uh, in June, I think.
Yes. Hi, hi. This is Ali Stone representing Sarah and Bill Murphy. Hi, how are you doing? Yes. So this house, it was approved in the June meeting uh, for the removal of the screen porch. Um, and the side entry. And then we added it, the addition of a two car garage with a room above. A connecting side entry and mudroom. And then to ex- extend the family room in the back. And so the amendment is to add a second floor to the addition to the family room. Um, extension. So a second floor that would make the master bedroom a little bit bigger. Um, this was before you because the lot is conforming, but the um. The setbacks, the house is non-conforming with both the front and the side setbacks. So the new addition would go directly above what had been approved. Um, in June. And um, so right now, the um. The side, the closest side setback is ten point eight. And this would still be at the eleven point three that was approved in June. Um, the um, the additional square footage is a hundred and seventy six new square, square footage, square feet. And um. So this is still seven hundred and fifty square feet below the allowable FAR. Um, and the new house total now is twenty eight sixty eight. So um, and then the far for this property is thirty six eighteen. So um, we're still way below that. Um, but it is, you know, it's still not, you know, it's still the non-conforming side setback. So that is why we are before you today.
Thank you. So just, just to uh, to be clear, the footprint uh, from what was approved. A couple of months ago has not changed. It was just. Above the garage is another room with a bathroom and all.
Yeah, there was always a room above the garage. This is another, just extending the master bedroom and it's over the new. Family room extension. In the back of the house. So um. It's just, that was a single story addition and now it's going two stories.
Okay. Um, any comments from the board?
I have a question, I think. So um, ideally, um. Obviously, Ms. Stone, we would, we would have. The whole project. At once and be able to approve the whole project at once or not approve the whole project at once and. And, and, and not have sort of um. Sort of a Sari Adam sort of uh, uh, several bites at the apple here. So I'm just, I'm just wondering if you could. You or the applicant could, you know, provide us any enlightenment as to, as to. How that came about or, or, or. But why, why it wasn't there in June, I guess, because this is only September.
Right. Well, you know, I think I'm gonna let um, the owner, Bill Murphy, answer that. I think.
You're muted.
Yes, great question. And ultimately, this is um, our, we're trying to be penny wise and pound foolish, I think in June. And we looked more carefully at this. Elise had actually presented this idea to us previously and. When we had originally put the concept of this forward, we were thinking about uh, redoing the master bedroom or not. And uh, we have decided for the investment we're making in this, it really makes sense to do this at the same time. And do this all at once. We wish we had done this all together at one time.
Great, thank you. I mean, I, 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 you know, stuff happens, right? So I'm, I'm not. This is not directed at you, Mr. Murphy or you. I mean, it's, it's just, it's just, I think that you, you uh. You know, I think it's important for the board to recognize just for the record, which is why I'm saying it that, you know, what you want to be careful that you don't get into a situation where. An applicant were, were to sort of. Think, well, I can't probably get the board to approve this. Bigger thing. So I'm gonna get him to do a smaller thing, then I'll come back and say, oh, it's just another hundred and seventy one square feet and it's just another whatever I, but I. But I appreciate your, your comment. Having renovated a few things myself in my life, I can appreciate the comment that. You know, you, you look at something and say, I just can't do that. And then you say, well, wait a minute, the whole house is going to be torn up, but. Maybe I can't really do that. So.
Yeah, it was very much of a uh, had nothing to do with what we thought the town would or wouldn't allow us, everything about what our budget and what our. Our patients would allow.
Thank you.
Good. Um, no other comments, questions? I will open it up for public comment. We had somebody with a hand up. Uh, but. She's actually gone. So is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? Being. Being none. Now I will like close the uh, public comments section of the hearing. And is there any discussion uh, between the members? I know that when this was presented. Uh. In June, it was pretty uh, was well received and, and, and we voted pretty quickly on this. Um, I, this. Particularly house has really won a butter. I think uh, the way it's situated on the lot, so um, that the butter was not present and. Um, I would assume that he would have, uh, that they would have chimed in otherwise. Um. So.
I'll just follow up on my, I'll follow up on my earlier point. I think that I really um. Tried to go, I went back to the original drawings. I went back. I mean, you know, would I have felt the same way about this had it been presented back in June? And I think the. In this particular case, the answer is yes. So I, I, and it's a hundred and seventy six square feet. It's not really. Changing the character. It's going to the back of the house. So it doesn't even really change. What's interesting about this um. To me was that it was a little, I had to keep going back and forth between the plans from the June meeting to this one to even sort of finally. Get in my mind where the change was because there isn't, there isn't really a change. There's no change to the front of the house. You can't, it doesn't really affect that. So. In that respect, I think it's, it's both a minor number of square feet and a minor change to the. Um, plans that don't affect the, the appearance from, from the street, et cetera.
Yeah, I agree. And no, uh, no change of footprint is uh, is important. So. Um, that all said. Um, I wouldn't entertain a motion.
For a motion to approve the.
Go ahead.
Anything else? No?
No.
Application of Sarah and Bill Murphy for an amendment, special permit. Under section seven one three, seven point six of the zoning by law to allow an additional hundred seventy six square foot second story addition to the previously granted. Uh, eleven ninety eight square foot two per garage with a connecting side entry, much from the first floor addition to an existing. One thousand four hundred ninety four square foot non-conforming dwelling, which increases the gross floor area by more than fifty percent at three sixty eight Old Marlboro Road.
Second.
Um, Ms. Faria.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Uh, congratulations and.
Thank you.
Mister Murphy, Mister Murphy, if you win the lottery, you like buy a boat or something.
We're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
So our seven thirty Concord Academy uh. Meeting, hearing for a special permit, site line review, section six two. Eleven, eleven, six and eleven, eight, seven to construct a centennial art center. Relocate and rehabilitate two existing dwellings, two twenty Main Street and I Cottage. Convert existing attached garage at two thirty eight Main Street into a dwelling. Unit and other associated site improvements at one sixty six Main Street. The applicant has requested a continuance to uh, the October thirteenth meeting. Uh, and we have a time slot for them at seven twenty. So can we have a motion uh, to?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Faria.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. That's continued. Uh, and then last, but not least, seven thirty five Concord Public Schools. Special permit on the sections four, three, one, six, two, eleven, seven, six and seven, seven. And eleven point six uh, to demolish the existing Sambal Middle School, construct a new middle school, which includes a height waiver. Relief from parking, impervious coverage greater than fifteen percent in the Groundwater Conservancy District at eight thirty five Old Marlboro, Marlboro Road. This applicant as well has requested in continuance to the uh, October thirteenth. Uh, he. And we have a slot for them at seven twenty five.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Faya.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Chair votes I as well. So that's also. Who are very. Busy evening on the thirteenth.
Well, assuming that the very busy evening that the planning board is going to have on September thirteenth doesn't result in. Yeah, additional. Pushes over here.
Yeah. Few bigger ones on here, so. And I'm not sure. Really whether there's anything new that has come in in the meantime.
Uh, there's only one other application, one brand new one for that day.
OK. Plainfield Road. OK. Good. So we still have. People hanging hanging on here if anybody wants to speak or add something to this meeting. Anybody from the public? If not. I don't think I need to make a motion, but I can just. Stay that.
Correct.
Excellent. Well, meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good trip, Jim.
And thank you.
See you next month.
OK.
Bye bye.
Have a good night.